Council's office, KP Law. I've met most of you, I think almost all of you, through various issues. But I'm doing this very informally so you can jump in with any questions at any time. I find that to be easier than having to wait for your question and then you forget it. So, obviously, there's a disclaimer because we're lawyers. So, what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about making a defendable decision and avoiding litigation, appeals and other actions. The Permit Extension Act, we're not going to talk about it. We're just, I'm just going to tell you that it no longer applies. I'm not sure how many of you, how many of you have been on the planning board or the zoning board for a long time, but there was this, there was this Permit Extension Act that increased permit life by four years. However, almost every permit that you would be dealing with has phased out of that. So, we don't have to worry about that anymore, which is nice. We're going to talk about, quickly, we're going to talk about the open meeting law, conflicts of interest, public records, and then just some important zoning and planning case updates. The first thing that you have to do when we talk about making a defendable decision and avoiding litigation, it doesn't start with drafting the decision. It starts with, we have to make sure that everything is correct from start to finish. Forty A has very strict regulation, strict timelines and requirements, as does forty-one subdivision, subdivision control. So, you have to advertise, you have to advertise in the correct amount of time. And then, when you conduct the public hearing, you have to open it properly, you have to open it on time, meaning if you have a sub, a special permit or a variance, it has to be within sixty-five days of getting that application. And actually, a variance has to be opened and closed within sixty-five days. So, that's something very important to remember. You then close the public hearing, you can deliberate, and then you can vote. You want to draft the decision, and then you want to perfect the decision. When you perfect the decision, you'd want to do that at a meeting. You do not want to do that by reply all to email, ever. Just never, ever hit reply all.
Amy, on that, should I? We've been emailing to the boards as blind copies, right? So...
You, you can email the entire board.
Right.
And they can email you.
We just can't email each other.
Do not ever email each other. Unless, unless it's a scheduling issue, but that's it. It's actually a good practice just to never do that. So, you guys are lucky because you have staff. So, you can actually go through staff, even with a scheduling issue. So, there really should be no reason to have any kind of reply all or anything like that. You can maybe email the chair regarding if you wanted anything on the agenda, something like that. So, the first thing you have to do is you have to check the application for completeness. Now, you have to be careful in a zoning and a planning context because you cannot, you cannot reject an application because it's incomplete. You have to take the application in, and then you go, you look at it, you say, "You're missing all this stuff, we can continue this hearing." If they say, "No, we think we have enough," then you can deny it for being incomplete. The reason why you have to actually take the application in is because you run the risk of a constructive approval. So, you don't want to do that. You want to make sure that you actually take it in and then open it, tell them what's missing. If they don't give you what's missing, you can deny it for lack of information. You always want to give the proper statutory notice, meaning the three hundred feet, a butters within three hundred feet, publication twice in a newspaper. The first one has to be fourteen days prior to the hearing. And when you draft the legal notice, again, you guys have staff, so you're lucky. But you want to make sure that the public notice is, you know, properly drafted, meaning the proper relief has been requested. So, if you, you don't want to advertise and put on the agenda and everything for a variance when you're actually going to be granting a special permit.
Does that notice have to go certified or can go regular mail?
So, under, under forty A, section eleven, it does not have to go certified.
What's the downside risk of not sending it certified? Is there one? I mean, did...
It's better to serve it, to send it certified. Then, there's no question that it's been sent.
So...
I guess it's the cost.
Well, yeah, but then it's probably easier to lose those cards, if the cards don't come back. And then, you have the presumption that, "Where were all the cards?" And if it's something that was sent, but we didn't get the card back.
Also, they're tracking number on them, too.
You don't need the card back. You have the white, you have the white slip. So, you sent it. So, that's, and you have to send it according to the tax to the assessor's records. So, as long as you, as long as the addresses match the assessor's, a butters list, and you have the white cards, then you have, you have the presumption of sending it.
With applications of completeness, does the same thing govern subdivision control? We have regulations, subdivision control regulations, that really clarify that if it's not complete, we can give it back to them and ask them to resubmit it?
So, again, you want to make sure that you actually take that application in and let them know that it's not complete. You're not the only town that has subdivision rules and regulations that require completeness. Unfortunately, I think all of those subdivision rules and, rules and regulations were enacted prior to the Wallock case, which basically said to a town, "No, you can't deny it with, because it's incomplete." If you have a preliminary subdivision plan coming in, and it's not, it doesn't necessarily meet every, you know, it doesn't follow the checklist of all of the items that it needs, you can, I would open up the hearing and I would tell them that they don't have an, you know, that they do not have it, they can come back. The problem is with a preliminary subdivision plan, the denial is of no consequence. So, it's more a definitive subdivision plan that you need to have everything in order.
What about an A and R?
An A and R plan, all, all an A and R plan has to be, it's, an A and R plan is not approved, remember, it's endorsed. And the only thing an A and R plan has to show is that there is no subdivision, meaning that there is frontage that meets the town bylaw and that there's adequate frontage. So, that's, that's all it has to show.
Even if our rules and regulations require otherwise?
Yes, yes. There's been case law that's pretty firm on A and Rs. And the reason being is because it's very, very confusing, A and Rs, because people come in with, you know, these A and Rs on paper roads, paper streets. Well, how are you supposed to determine if access is adequate if it's a paper street? You know, it's almost impossible. So, we've had a lot of, there's been a lot of case law lately on A and Rs. There's also, we're going to get into it tonight, it's one of the case updates, but the Bruno case, basically, an A and R plan, you know, it can, an A and R plan can be endorsed with a zoning violation. So, we'll get into that. Because all, all you're supposed to look at is, is there enough frontage and is access You want to check the tax arrears list because you guys have, you guys have adopted chapter forty, section fifty-seven, which is a general bylaw, chapter eighty-four, which provides that everyone, that the applicant has to be current on taxes, on their taxes prior to getting a permit or a license. And then, conducting the public hearing, you guys, I've been with you guys all, you guys all do this right. You have to read and summarize the legal ad aloud, aloud. You confirm that you have a quorum. Now, this gets more difficult when you have continued hearings because you have to confirm that you have the same quorum, or if the, if there's a member missing, that they've only missed one hearing. Now, this gets confusing because if a member missed a meeting and the hearing was continued, but nothing, no testimony was taken at that hearing, it doesn't count. So, it's, what you want to do is you want to keep track of the meetings and the hearings where there was testimony actually taken. You can explain the board's procedures to the public. Some boards do where they have the board, they have the applicant present, they ask questions, they send it out to the audience, they, sometimes I'll have boards that say, whoever's in favor can speak first, whoever's opposed can speak first, or whoever gets to the microphone first. I have, I have a board that actually listens to the applicant, sends it out to the public, and then takes it back to the board. So, it's however you guys want to do that. I think it's always a good idea to have the applicant explain the project first, just because that, I think, would help move things along. You also want to explain to the public what relief the applicant seeks. This is important when we're dealing with a special permit versus a variance versus site plan review, because they are extremely different. It also is important when we're dealing with a preliminary subdivision versus a definitive subdivision. And it also is very important when we're dealing forty Bs, because forty Bs, we need to explain to the public what's going on. And then, you can allow the applicant, you can allow the board, allow public participation. And then, you have to keep official minutes of the meeting. So, you want to be respectful to the applicants and the public, and I've worked with, with both boards, and you guys are great. Keep an open mind, avoid conflicts of interest. The Ethics Commission has Attorney of the Day, it's a hotline, you can call and ask if you have any kind of question regarding if you have a conflict or not. It's hard because you live in this town and you're, you know, making decisions, so...
Minutes of the meeting, can they reference a video that's online, or do they have to be hard copies?
What, so, you're asking if a video would be evidence?
Well, when we do our minutes, can we reference...
Oh, no, 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 no. They have to be written. Yeah, yeah. So, if you have extensions for the time for the board to act, you have to make sure that it's in writing, it has enough time for the decision to be actually made and signed, and has to be filed with the town clerk. And you have to make sure that it's, it's timely filed with the town clerk, it'd be prior to any kind of, any kind of deadline hitting. It's also very important to remember that you have timelines. So, you're not just continuing the public hearing, you have to also continue those timelines. So, with regard to a special permit, when you close the public hearing, you have ninety days to issue your decision. With a variance, you have sixty-five days from when you, when the application comes in. So, if that's going to be continued, you have to make sure the time to act is also continued.
Amy...
Mm-hmm.
With, if we're accepting the application on submittal, if it's not complete...
Mm-hmm.
Is the time period still going if they give us nothing?
Yes, and that's why we have to, that's why you have to open it, address what's missing, and then either they give you the information or you deny it. Because if not, right when they submit that information is when the ti, is when the clock starts ticking for constructive approval.
So, you would, you would ask for it, and if they delay in getting that back to you, at some point, you stop that clock from running by...
Oh, yeah, you give them, I would give them, you know, one, one meeting.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you can't, you don't want to give them up to day sixty-four, because if they don't give you the information and you haven't closed it and denied it, then it's constructively approved. So, one of the things, you know, I'm saying constructive approval, you know, like it's this horrible thing. An instant, it is, it is, by the way, but instances when you have, it is, don't, don't do it. But when I have incomplete information, the constructive approval is based on what was filed. So, if they asked for the wrong relief, they get the wrong relief. So, you know, it's not necessarily in their best interest, but it is still not a good thing. So, we've got to keep track of that. So, during the public hearing, you're going to get applications, projects that need outside consultants. And it's called a peer review. And with regard to a peer review, the board votes on who they want to use. They, the, usually, there's a proposal in front of you. You accept that proposal, the applicant then submits the money that the proposal is for, and then the applicant sometimes has to supplement that account if necessary. The only appeal of a, of a peer review, a, an applicant can't, cannot appeal the fact that you're requiring a peer review. The applicant can only appeal the person that you've chosen or the firm that you've chosen because they do not possess the required qualifications. I, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen it. So, you know, because the board's not going to hire someone that's not qualified. So, but I don't think I've ever seen one of these appeals. But that is the only appeal. They cannot appeal just because they don't like the fact that you guys are asking for a peer review.
What about costs?
So, the costs have to be reasonable, and if you have, if you go out to bid with a reputable engineering firm, that's what you're going to get.
Slightly different question. Is there anything that's covered in the statutes that allow us to implement an ombudsman requirement of a major developer so that the rest of the people in the residents could seek some additional help in terms of how the process runs? Or is that something the town would take on by itself?
No, no, because that wouldn't fall under peer review, and I, I know you're not saying that it would. Because, and the other thing to remember is that the peer reviewer works for the town, even though the peer reviewer is being paid by the applicant, they still work for the town. That's really, that's really it that, that the board has in there. I, I don't, I don't know how else you could, you, there's really no other kind of, there's no other funding for it. There's the, there's the gift account under fifty-three A, but that, what that is, that is the developer has to agree to it, and it's between the developer and the board of selectmen. But that's not, that's not common. Because we have this fifty-three G, which is, which is great, because it helps the town. So, before closing, you want to ask if anyone has any additional information to submit, and you want to explain that nothing further will be accepted because the hearing's closed. Once the hearing is closed, there is no evidence, you cannot accept any evidence, you cannot accept verbal evidence, you cannot accept written evidence. So, once it's closed, it's closed. You want to take a vote to close the hearing, and that's just a majority, even if you're voting on a special permit, which requires a supermajority. So, you're voting just to close the hearing, and then you want to take votes to make findings based on the bylaw. So, with regard to findings, I suggest that the, the board go through the bylaw. So, if you're doing site, site plan approval, you want to go through the site plan, you want to go through article fifteen, through site plan, and you want to make sure that pedestrian traffic is addressed, vehicular traffic is addressed. And all of these things that you're supposed to be looking for, you want to make sure that they're all addressed. And those are the findings that you make. Obviously, you can make other findings, but that is a good place to start. And then, you want to make a vote, you want to take a vote on the decision, and you want, in the, in the motion, you want to do all conditions and requirements of approval, if you have any.
Can you do one without the other? Can you do a decision in advance of making findings or imposing the conditions?
So, you can, a zoning board of appeals can deny a variance without making findings. Other than that, you really, you really need to have findings to make any, any decision, particularly an approval. There are some cases where it says that when it's a denial, you don't necessarily have to have findings, but most of those cases where a denial, the denial was based on lack of information, so... And then, these are just the required votes to approve. So, for a special permit, it's four fifths. So, it's, because we have a three-member zoning board of appeals, it's a majority for the, for the zoning board of appeals. And because you guys have a seven-member planning board, it's five out of seven. A and R is a majority, subdivision is a majority, variances, again, is a supermajority. A zoning appeal, meaning when someone appeals a determination of the building commissioner, that's also a supermajority. The conservation commission is always a majority. Comprehensive permit is a majority, and under historic districts, it's also a majority, unless there's a special act. So, if a motion to approve an application is made and fails to achieve the necessary votes for approval, the motion fails and the project is denied. You don't have to make another motion. So, you can, there, you can always make motions in the, in the affirmative, and if it fails, it's denied. Or you can make the motion, you can make a motion to deny, and if it passes, it passes.
Site plan is the same four fifths, or is it a majority?
Site plan is a majority, depending on what kind of site plan it is. So, if it's a site, if it's a discretionary site plan, such as site plan special permit, then you have to have the supermajority.
Four fifths of a special permit is eighty percent.
Yes.
So, out of a board of, committee of seven, that's more than five. Is that just...
I think it's, it's actually in the statute.
Okay.
So, it's in the statute that seven members is, is five.
Okay. Somebody need to make a whole giant table.
I will check, I'm going to check that, though, that's a good question. So, in a decision, for the motion for the, for the project, you want to identify the applicant, the address, jurisdictional basis for the decision, such as bylaw section, you know, bylaw article fifteen, the zoning district buffer, buffer area, historic district, the findings of fact required, all required determinations of law, and language that any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. So, these you don't actually have to have in your, in your motion, because that would be a twenty-minute motion. But this is, these are stuff that has, that should be in the decisions, so... When you are, so, this is, this is about making findings. So, when you make findings, you don't want to say the project will not be substantially more detrimental. You actually want to say why the project will not be more, substantially more detrimental. And then, for denying a subdivision, you have to have detailed reasons. And then, and for example, the detailed reasons need to be that, for example, the subdivision, you have denied a waiver of a dead-end road due to safety, and the applicant refuses to, you know, refuses to change that. The roadway construction, the profile doesn't match the subdivision rules and regulations and is not deemed to be safe. Drainage is not acceptable. So, you guys can't just deny a special, a subdivision, you have to actually state the reasons why. And then, the special permit granting authority also have to give reasons for denial. And it would be the same thing, you have to give, you know, actual reasons why. So, you can condition decisions. The, the motion should state certain conditions. Conditions may run with the relief granted or may be required to run with the land. So, if there's a restriction, that's recorded. The only time that we see special permits, and I don't know if there are, I don't think I see many variances that run with the land, but, well, variances automatically run with the land. But most of the, most of the special permits that run with the land are in-law apartments. Those are almost all of them. And that's because you can have a requirement that they have, that the person has to be related. So, when the house gets sold, that, that in-law apartment special permit is gone until the new owner comes in and proves that their relative is living in the in-law apartment. And then, there's also a case where, a Lincoln case, where a, a solar project was conditioned to the land or to the developer based on, based on, there was some lighting requirements that the developer actually agreed to. And so, they had to, they went, they then issued a decision with, with a condition based on lighting, which happened to be that, that all lights have to be off at, you know, ten or something. And then, they ended up appealing that, saying that, "No, you can't condition a special permit." And the court held, "Yes, you can, if it, if it's reasonable and within the actual, it's necessary for the project." But, most, most of this, most conditions would run with the relief granted.
Can you run, with, with the relief granted or the land?
Relief granted. Most conditions would run with what they're seeking.
So, okay, so, if you wanted a particular developer to work it, so you can have the permit run just to that, the developer, as opposed to the land?
Yeah. Yeah, it's very hard to do that unless it's, for example, unless there's a, a strong nexus to the bylaw, meaning in-law apartments, something like that. You want to clearly identify circumstances, which strict adherence to plans is not required. You want to do this as, as...
Little possible.
Yeah, you don't, you really don't want to ever have a plan that is approved with something on it that is not required or not, or doesn't show up. And it mostly comes up with, like, the type of tree, maybe, an example. And the reason being is because who knows when this is going to get built? They could get an extension, so it could be years before it's built. And the building commissioner looks at the plans, and things don't match. So, if there is something such as, you know, the type of tree proposed may, you know, developer, you know, has the option of choosing, you know, any abreviatey or evergreen or something like that, it should be clearly stated in the decision. Yes?
When, if, and when we notice that something was not built according to plan, other than, like, telling them to tear the whole thing down?
Mm-hmm.
I guess, what grounds do the boards have in terms of...
So, the board, technically, the boards have no grounds, it's the building commissioner. So, what would happen is there could be a request for enforcement to the building commissioner under forty A, section seven. Building commissioner can then issue a cease and desist, corrective action, with anything that he deems necessary. And that would be taken, that is either adhered to, or the applicant or developer or whoever's building it can, or built it or is running it, can then appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. And it's difficult, it's, it's difficult, too, because if the building permit references the decision, and whatever was built was built according to a valid building permit, then within six years, the building commissioner loses all authority to enforce the use of that property based on a building permit, an original building permit, even if it was issued by mistake.
They define any jurisdictions earlier in the process.
Yes, yeah. The authority to condition, under subdivision relief, the planning board shall approve the definitive plan if it conforms to the subdivision rules and regulations, and the board of health, and the requirements of local zoning. So, you have no power to disapprove or condition if all the requirements are satisfied and there's no waivers sought. For a special permit, you can, you can impose conditions regarding safeguards and limitations on time or use. Varens, same thing, you can impose conditions and safeguards and limitations both for time and use. Any condition, any condition based upon a continued ownership, you cannot, you cannot make, you cannot make any kind of condition based on ownership of the property because a variance runs with the land. So, these are just some examples of reasonable conditions. You can do deadlines, you could do, you know, private trash removal, deadlines to begin construction, finish construction. That's, that's especially important with a large project, because inevitably, it's going to be a phased project. And so, if it's going to be a phased project, you guys might as well be the ones controlling the phased project. You don't want them starting here, and then starting here, and starting here, and then you have half-constructed areas, things like that. You could delay it on parking landscaping, noise, maintenance requirements, police details, hours of operation, and then deadlines for exercising and recording the relief. And then, all, you know, all the conditions must be definite, you cannot have, you know, ambiguous conditions because it makes the building commissioner's life difficult. And then, you want to follow almost always the same procedure when you're drafting and finalizing and filing the decision. You know, you want to review the draft decision, you want to, you know, make sure that it's, once it's final, who's going to sign it? You want to make sure who's going to file it with the town clerk, because it has to be filed. For example, you know, special permit has to be filed ninety days from the close of the public hearing. And then, once the, once you file the decision with the town clerk, you have to mail the notice of the decision to the applicant, parties in interest, and every person present at the hearing who requested in writing that notice be sent. So, that doesn't happen a lot. So, for minutes, for minutes, you have to do the date, the time, the place of the meeting, and the members that are present and the members that are absent. You know, you can do a detailed summary of discussion of each topic. You have, the key here is just to allow that a person that was not present understands the substance of what occurred. It does not have to be word for word. You have to take down whatever decisions were made, actions were taken, votes which were recorded. There's no, you cannot do any secret ballots, nothing like that. And then, you have to attach a list of documents and other exhibits that were used by the board. It's all part of the record. So, if an app, it, you know, basically, a document would, should be appended if it was, if it was given to you by the applicant, by a butter, anything. It has to be identified, and the document has to be discussed by members. So, if something was simply filed and it never got to you for some reason, that doesn't necessarily have to be part of the record. The record is really everything that you guys considered. So, it's hard for, when an applicant is standing here doing a presentation, it's hard for you guys to say you didn't consider it. So, it's just easier to put everything in. Open session minutes must be created and approved in a timely manner. There are new regulations... There are new regulations that indicate approval must occur generally within the next three meetings, or within thirty days, whichever is later. Minutes of open meeting, they're public record, even, no matter, even if they're draft and haven't been approved, they are public record. Draft minutes are initially, they're the notes taken by whoever is tasked with taking notes or minutes. And if they're asked for, they have, they are, they are public record, so they have to be released. If there's an appeal, and you guys all just dealt with this, you want to note the date you're served, note whether there's a summons, you want to note if there's a short order of notice, and you immediately want to notify the town manager. You, you guys could, could just let Paul know, and he'll, he'll, you know, he'll relay that. If you're served, if you're ever served with a notice requiring your attendance at trial or deposition, or any kind of court-related proceeding, you want to notify Paul or the town manager. The statute, 48, section nine, or 48, section seventeen, I'm sorry, which is the appeal of, of special permit denials, or special permit approvals, and variances, and things like that, section seventeen requires that the board be served individually. So, what happens when you're, when you're appealing a decision, you appeal it, you file the appeal in court, and then, you file it with the town clerk within twenty days. And then, supposedly, within fourteen days, you're supposed to mail it to all of the, to all of the members of the board. And that's the reason why everybody got a copy of that last complaint. So, unfortunately, because it's in the statute, it's what's done, so, we're not going to get around that. The open meeting law, so, the open meeting law changed about two years ago, they made some new requirements. So, the change is now, the notice of the meeting must include a listing of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed. Minutes must include a summary of topics and a list of the documents submitted, that happened in 2010, when you had to, you then had to append all the documents that you looked at. The chair has to periodically review executive session minutes to see if they're ready for disclosure, so, even though we take executive session minutes, and they are a separate document, they eventually will be released. So, once the litigation is over, et cetera, and there's, there's no, there would be no harm to the town's position, then they have to be released. And then, you have to, as you know, you have to notice the, you have to notice the public hearing, you have to do it in the paper for publication, you have to send it to a butters, and you also have to post it in a conspicuous place in town hall. In 2017, they said that the, the, a website is satisfactory.
Does that apply to social media channels as well?
No.
No?
No. So, it's our opinion that that only applies to an official town website.
But, we do post agendas now, not only on the town website, but on our Facebook pages.
There's no, yeah, there's, there's no bar to doing it, but it's not, yeah.
That does not serve it.
No, it does not. And then, that, what I just said, the approval of meeting minutes have to be three meetings or thirty days. And then, the date that the ti, the date that the notice is posted must be recorded on it, so that's why we have it, we go through the town clerk. So, you send the notice to the town clerk, she posts, she stamps it, and then, she posts it up on the bulletin board. Site visits, there's a lot of confusion over site visits. Site visits are not a meeting, they don't have to be posted, however, you cannot deliberate during the inspection at all, with anyone, no one, you go, you look, you leave. And then, if, you can post a site visit, however, you have to remember that you're going onto private property, you guys were invited onto private property, but other members of the public might not be invited onto private property, and it's not our position to invite them. So, members of the public, whether they can go on the property or not, is up to the owner of the property, not the board. Executive session process, you first convene an open session, you state the purpose of your executive session, you have to take a record, a roll call vote to go into executive session, that means everyone has to say their name and yes or no. You have to announce if open session will reconvene afterwards, and then, you have to maintain all the exhibits, documents used in a reasonable proximity to minutes. You only, you can only discuss the matter that's on the agenda, and the matter that was cited in the motion to go into executive session. All votes in executive session have to be taken by roll call. You have to prepare, like I said, you have to prepare minutes, you have to timely review and approve them, and then, eventually, they will be, they will be released. Okay, open meeting law, using email, just no deliberating over email. It says, you know, you can perform scheduling by email, but just make sure you don't go down that path, that all of a sudden, scheduling turned into something else. And you can distribute materials via email, but those have to be available to the public. Again, you guys are fortunate, you have staff, so staff will do this, anything that comes into the planning board, or the zoning board of appeals, is a public record anyway. So, any person that asks for it will get a copy.
Just going back, on the timely review and approval of executive session, is that done in an open meeting, or is that done in a?
No, the chairman does that.
Okay.
And then, once they're released, they're, they're public record.
Okay, so, that's not the board approving them?
No.
Okay.
No.
Oh, and I had the same, or, I had the same question, that's good. I was thinking the same thing, we wouldn't talk about the meetings in an open session.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Can the chair bring in people to help them review or?
Yes, because a lot, I mean, it would help if you had someone that was on, that was sitting there on the case at the time, which might not happen. I mean, some of these, some of these cases go on for, you know, a couple of years, so, you just never know. But, yes, it would be the chairman or someone could go in. Remote participation may be allowed by the board of selectmen. With remote participation, a quorum has to be present in the room. So, the person that's remote does not count towards the, towards the quorum, and the person chairing the meeting must also be present, must be physically present in the room. That doesn't mean that the chairman can never, can never use remote participation, it just means that him or her will need to delegate their authority in that, at that meeting.
Has the town authorized remote participation?
Yes, I think they have, but not.
I can't imagine the technology that's there to support it.
No, I, I think they have, but not Skype, that you can call in. I'll have to check, I'll check on that.
I mean, the best our technology would be, would be conference calling.
Yes. Yeah.
When I started on the board, I was told basically, in theory, but Norton has never really done it.
Yeah. Maybe not. I thought, I thought, I looked at the general bylaws, and I thought they.
I'm aware that Norton.
Okay. So, you guys don't have to worry about any of this, you do have to.
We also be here.
Just show up.
Yeah, yeah, just come, just show up to the meetings, that's, that's good.
Everyone's up there.
Yes.
We're all remotely.
So, not kind of towards the quorum, but, but for the vote, it would be counted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, under conflict of interest.
Before we get to that, though.
Yes.
That last bullet, new regulations not provide that remote participation permitted, the physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult.
Yep.
Does that supersede the requirement of selectmen approval?
No, 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 that's.
Because you don't need any reason to, if remote participation is allowed, as I understand it, you don't need a reason to.
You do, you do, you need, you need a reason, a good reason to not be in the room.
Okay.
You're in Florida, you're somewhere else, it, yeah. You, you can't be at your house.
Okay.
In your easy chair, you know?
All right, I, I.
Next thing you know, there's a schedule, rotating schedule, who gets to stay home? No. Yeah, you can't do that, so.
Supporting event does not.
Yes, right. So, under conflicts of interest, all municipal employees, and you guys are special municipal employees as, as board members, you have to receive a summary of the law, hoping you did when you were sworn in. You must complete online training, hoping you guys all did that. So, the conflict of interest, it's a little bit confusing, but we've kind of, we've tried to narrow it down. Do not act if you have a financial interest, do not act if you are related to the applicant, do not act if you are in a butter or a close resident, you don't have to actually be the next-door neighbor, but you could be across the street. And do not act if you have bias. So, we want to steer clear of all of those things.
Can, can you participate, not as a member, but at the hearing itself?
So, you can, you should leave the table, you should sit in the audience, you should keep your comments factual, your comments and concerns should be factual, because, you know, even though you have, even though you have removed yourself, you know, you want to stay away from any kind of bias or anything like that, and just keep, we advise that everybody just keep their comments very factual and questions factual.
Amy, oh, sorry if you're not done.
I'm done, yeah.
So, we've had a lot of, obviously, applicants with the schools. So, for example, both schools that have come into play recently, you know, my children attend.
Mm-hmm.
We've just, like, disclosed, you know, just so you know, my child attends that school.
Correct.
Is that like, the appropriate way?
Yes.
Because, you know, you don't want there to be a, you know, perceived conflict of interest, that kind of maybe makes us a close resident, because our child spends so much time in that facility.
Right.
Although, we're not really in.
You're not.
A butter. So, is that, I think that was kind of the guidance that Paul gave us, if that's.
Yeah. You, you wouldn't have to.
Like that.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to recuse yourself from something like that, it's a, it's a public school.
Yeah.
So, you really wouldn't have to, there's no financial interest, you have no financial interest in that, you're not in a butter, and you're not related to the school.
Yeah.
The superintendent, whomever it may be. One thing that you do want to be careful of is if you are a member of a, a member of a club, so, say, you're a member of a golf club, if you are just a member, and you do not sit on the board, you're not on the board of directors or anything like that, you can still vote on that golf course coming to you, provided you file a disclosure with the town, with the, actually, the planning board would be, would be with the town clerk, and the zoning board of appeals would be with the selectmen. But, you can file a disclosure that is provided, it's online, and we can get you a copy of it. But, it basically just says that you're a member of this golf club, you're not, you're not, you're not on the board of directors, or anything like that, and you don't find, you don't benefit financially from it, and you can still sit and hear this hearing, so. So, that's, that, for that. But even, but with the school, I don't even think you need to file a disclosure, I think you just say it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, we could connect things, and connect things, and connect things, like, we pay taxes, so, you know, it's just, you know, you could just keep going, and it'll spiral out of control.
Amy, quick question on the conflict of interest. If there is a conflict of interest that does go into executive session, I assume that that conflict.
It follows, you cannot be in executive session. So, if, if, you know, if we're discussing a litigation matter, and you've recused yourself throughout the whole, throughout the public hearing, you would also recuse yourself from the executive session. Public records, public records law also changed recently, 2016, I think, and it changed a few things, not much that you guys have to worry about, more Paul has to worry about it, and the town clerk has to worry about it. All records that are received are public record unless there's an exception. Exceptions are very few and far between with regard to land use boards, exceptions are really social security numbers, police records, HIPAA, things like that, nothing that we really ever deal with. Emails are public records unless there's an exception, again, meaning that there's something in there that's triggering this, or if there's a doc, you know, documents between myself and you that are labeled attorney-client, settlement, you know, privileged, think confidential, then those are, those are not public records. Public records can include texts, social media posts, other electronic communications, even if it's sent from your personal account or your personal phone. All the filed documents are public record, minutes are public record, and then, again, with the minutes, you need to have the date, time, and place, the members present, topics discussed, motions and votes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Is there any level of, like, scrubbing or redacting in terms of, that can happen with those, or if it's like, taking somebody's personal email off of a document, or it's released, or something like that?
Right, right, and that, so, yes, and that, normally, when we get these public records, if we get these big public records requests, the documents don't, the documents actually come through our office. So, the town will compile all of the documents, and then, they send it to us, and then, we do any redacting or withholding that we find, that we think is inappropriate. So, electronic, the request may be made in, in person or in writing, so, unfortunately, you can have somebody just verbally come into the office and say, I want X, Y, Z. That's new, before, it had to be in writing. You can, you want to ask the person if they, electronic records preference, which we, which is, we push that, because you'd rather get them all on a thumb drive than boxes of documents. The records access officer must regard, must respond within ten business days, and if they do not, then we cannot, we cannot, there can be no fee for responding to the public records request. There's a small-town exemption where you can charge the fees from minute one, the rate is capped at twenty-five dollars per hour, copies at five cents, and that's, normally, it's, the first two hours are free, and this is of, you're supposed to, the person, the charges relate to the person in the department that is the, the lowest-paid person, it's how much time they would have spent. If the highest-paid person does the work, they, we still, the fee would be based on the lowest-paid person's hourly rate. And so, the, we can, the OLO, which is the town clerk, can, they can delay the records until the fee is paid, however, they do have to respond within the ten days. So, they have to respond within the ten days with a fee estimate, if they never get the fee estimate, if they never get the fee, then, they don't have to provide the documents. Documents need to be maintained for seven years. The disposal schedule, it's posted, it's, it's different for everything. I don't, I don't, does the town even dispose of document, most towns don't.
Come to my.
Yeah, exactly, so. We never have, we never have to worry about this with town, so, do not dispose of documents without consulting the disposal schedule and following the proper procedures, but like I said, that just doesn't really ever happen. So, before producing records, electronic or hard copy, you always want to check whether the electronic documents contain any confidential information, medical, social security, driver's license, financial account numbers should be redacted, you want to review the records to make sure there's no attorney-client privilege, because if you do, if you, if you hand over the document, then you are waiving the privilege permanently. So, these are just a few of the case updates, that, some cases of notes that I think are interesting. So, this Hickey case, Hickey, the zoning board of appeals of Dennis, so, like I said, under 48, section seventeen, appeal, within twenty days, you have to file a complaint in court, and you have to file a copy of that complaint with the town clerk. In this case, they didn't do that. Instead, they mailed a copy of the complaint to the planning board, to the planning office, and the assistant planner opened it up, and land court said, too late, and dismissed the complaint. It went to the appeals court, and the appeals court, which in my opinion is completely wrong, said that that notice, that said that there was sufficient notice, because the town clerk, because the assistant planner mentioned it in passing to the assistant town clerk. So, it, the decision is wrong, but it's out there. We have, another decision is based on short-term rentals, every town is grappling with this and having, having a problem with this. Here, they were not permitted, they weren't a permitted use under the town of Linfield zoning bylaws, so they could not be grandfathered use. So, what happened was, Linfield enacted zoning regulations for short-term rentals, and this person said, well, too bad, I've already been doing it, so I'm grandfathered. However, they weren't grandfathered, because they were never allowed in the first place, because it was never listed on the permit, on the, on the, it wasn't a permissible use on the table of use chart. And there's really, shockingly, there's been very few or no other real decisions on short-term rentals, so it's a little surprising to me, because I thought it would be a big deal. Bruno, this is the Bruno case, so, this is, when you have an A and R plan, provided there's frontage, and it's, and it's adequate access, you have to endorse it. If there are zoning violations, for example, when you, if you do an A and R else, if you do the, an A and R plan based on the second paragraph where, if you have structures already there, so if you then allow them to separate the lot into two, and one of those structures becomes non-conforming, you still have to endorse it, and that, the building commissioner cannot issue enforcement until one of those lots is sold to a third party. So, it's not the date that, it's not the date that it was endorsed, it's not the date that. that it's filed at the registry. The violation does not become ripe until one of the lots is sold to a third party, and the reason for that is this whole doctrine of merger. So, even though you have two separate lots that are recorded at the registry, if the same person owns them, in a zoning context, they are merged. So, that, that was, that was a big case, and it actually cleared up a lot of things, I think. And then, the next case, this, this Furlong case, is interesting, only because it actually upheld a variance for a boat repair facility. They had this, they had this thing that lifted up boats, and they had to put it into the, into the side, the setback, and their hardship was safety. There's never been a variance where the hardship is, is safety, and the reason being is that if they put this anywhere else, they would basically hit people with boats. So, this was the only place they could put it, and it was necessary. So, it ended up going to land court, and land court upheld the variance. It was then appealed to the appeals court, and that was, the appeals court also upheld the variance. So, in the Muro case, we talk about, we talk about abutters, and the rebuttable presumption of standing. So, under forty-eight, section eleven, you have to notify everyone within three hundred feet, and it's, it's three hundred feet, from a butters to, a butters to a butters within three hundred feet. And so, this case finally determined what that actually means, a butters to a butters within three hundred feet. And that is, so what it means is that everyone has to be within three hundred feet. So, you can't have, you cannot have someone that is three hundred feet away, and then they're a butter. So, essentially, you have to, you, you have to be an actual a butter, and so, and again, they have a presumption of standing, but that doesn't mean that they have standing. So, that's, the presumption of standing can be, can be rebuttable, and it also, it is often. There's often, plaintiffs are, their cases are dismissed because of standing a lot, even when you have a next-door neighbor. So, basically, that just gives you the presumption of standing, but it doesn't mean that you have standing. Most of the time in land court, you have to have expert testimony to prove that you have standing, so. And then, the McIntyre case goes to the, this goes to the enforcement that we talked about, under section, under section seven, where if something happened, if something goes wrong, when the building commissioner has the, has the time to do the enforcement, and when you can appeal a building commissioner's decision. Or if it's an untimely appeal, then the zoning board of appeals does not have to grant anything, or any appeal. They don't have to grant the appeal. So, that's it. So, are there any other questions?
Amy, question?
Yes.
Open meeting law, conversations between members of less than a quorum, is that an issue?
Yes, you do, you do not want to deliberate unless you have a quorum. If you are talking about what's on sale at the supermarket, that's fine.
No, but between.
No.
Two people, as opposed to a quorum?
Yes, that's deliberate, you're deliberating. You should only deliberate in an open meeting. Yeah, it's a good practice to get into, to never discuss anything unless you're in an open meeting, unless you're talking to Paul, or staff, or something like that. Anything else? Okay. I don't know how to shut this off, Paul, sorry.
That's okay.
I couldn't find, that's what I was looking for earlier, so. All right, I'll let you handle that.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
What time do we have?
Five minutes till.
Oh, no, I think our agenda says seven fifteen.